And it is the approval of the minutes of August thirteenth, regular.
So moved.
Meeting. We have a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August thirteenth. Is there any additions, comments, changes to the minutes? If not, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Item two is correspondence. We have two items and we'll take them both in one vote. Item two A is a memorandum of the town plan dated August thirteenth, twenty twenty five, concerning an administrative subdivision approval, application of Richard W. and Marion E. Galapo Trust.
No, I think you can continue.
Involving properties located at one eighteen Walcott Avenue and further identified as lots seventy-five and seventy-six on assessors plat one-two-one N W. Item two B is a memorandum of the town plan dated August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, concerning the minor subdivision approval, the application of Victor J. and Dixon P. Ogunorn for combined preliminary and final plan approval of a two-lot minus subdivision of land property fronting on Berkeley Avenue, plat one-nineteen, lot fifteen. May I have a motion to receive this correspondence?
I'm moved.
Right.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? I have a question, Ron. For these administrative subdivision approvals that you do, can you put the plot diagram, at least post it in the packet?
Yeah, we can. I think we were doing that and with Anita being gone, I forgot to do that, but I will.
Okay, alright.
I will add that to the online packet for any items.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion to receive this correspondence say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. For the agenda modifications, we expect items four A and four B to be continued. Next item on the agenda is item four A. I assume there's no one here representing them. So I know it's going to be continued, so may I have a motion to continue item four A to the October eighth meeting?
So moved.
Mister Chairman, I wanted to just discuss this one a minute.
Well, let's.
Okay.
Oh, okay. We'll get the motion on the table and we have discussion.
Okay.
So somebody made the motion. It was a seconded? Okay, a motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. So I know that we have a policy on continuances that has been extended in this case, in the case of this property, for what have been good reasons, but two months ago, they had an opportunity to move forward and to answer questions regarding traffic that were put forward by Mister Walansky and they failed to do so in any meaningful manner. And then last month, they had an opportunity to respond to comments made by Crossman Engineering and they failed to do so in any meaningful manner. So I conclude from this that they are at least not diligently pursuing a traffic solution here and i- in the worst case, that they are really not committed to addressing a very complex traffic situation. So I don't anticipate that next month or the month after, we're going to have satisfactory answers either. So I think this would be a case where we should follow our policy and not grant a further continuance.
For those who are not on the board when the policy was adopted, the policy, I believe, states that once an item has been on the agenda for six months, the board has the option of dropping it. Once it's been on there for a year, it's automatically taken off, if I remember correctly, right? Yep. So at this point, I believe this is the seventh month that this has been on the agenda, so we do have the option of dropping this if we want to. Quite honestly, I'm surprised that Mister Lynch isn't here. At least he showed up last, last month to request the continuance.
Well, I can maybe add a little bit to the, to the status of what's going on. So the comments from Crossman came in shortly before last month's meeting, at which point the applicant requested, as you suggested, requested more time to have their engineer review those comments. I heard from the applicant's attorney this week that the engineer is still working towards getting response to Crossman's comments to the board and fully anticipates having that response for the next meeting, so I just wanted to let the board know that they're not. They don't want to drop the project and they certainly would request that the board not take it off the agenda. The attorney indicated to me that they fully expect to be prepared to move forward at the next meeting.
Right, and I'm just saying, if they had been diligent, having been the beneficiary of this board's grace for numerous continuances, they would have done it within the month that they had since the last continuance and, and furthermore, they, their responses to Mister Walansky struck me as a little bit non-serious. So I, I just don't have a good feeling about it and I, and I think that a further continuance is, is one that exceeds the grace that we should offer.
Let me ask this question, Ron. Have you talked to Steve about this? Is Crossman, based on what you wrote, Crossman is reviewing?
Crossman has reviewed the plans. Their comments have been forwarded to the applicant.
And we're waiting for their?
Waiting for the applicant to respond to Crossman's comments.
Do you know when Crossman forwarded the comments to the applicant?
I'd have to look at the date. I'm gonna.
The letter's dated August eighteenth. The letter in our packet.
The letter from Crossman?
Yeah.
Okay.
August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, which.
Alright, that was actually after.
After the meeting.
After last month's.
After the meeting, but three weeks ago.
Yeah, but I think they're asking for more studies and I think those studies, I think.
I didn't read the letter, quite honestly, because I, it was going to be continued, so.
Sure, so I did, and it, and the letter is asking for more data to substantiate their, you know, assessment that of.
Asking for more data from home.
From, from Brian, from their consultant. So I think that process might take a little time. I would, I would, I understand what you're saying, but I would give them, I would allow them to.
I, I, I'm willing to continue this another month and get the message to them that they should, that it will be continued again.
Yeah, and can I?
That's a good idea.
Sure, sure.
I think, I think last meeting as well, we made a point, and I think the planning board was in general agreement that for developments of this size in, in these locations, the, the traffic study should include not only what impact this development would have on traffic, but what, but also include, you know, in the context of all the other development that's happening in the area. I didn't see that in this letter from Crossman as a request to do that.
But that was made clear at the last meeting.
It was, but I don't know if.
They should include future development, known future development.
Right, but I think, I think maybe there's an opportunity, since there is a little more time, for Crossman to include some guidance on that, because they were asking for guidance on, you know, what does that look like?
They get information on known projects from you and then.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So why don't, why don't we continue this another month and get the message to them that it will not be continued again? They have to get their study in for the next meeting, which means a week before the meeting. Okay, so we have the motion to continue this to the ten eighth, October eighth meeting. Is the motion maker willing to modify that to be subject to no additional continuations? Who made the motion?
I think.
Are you willing to make that modification?
Yes.
Okay, is the seconder willing to make that modification? Okay, a motion is made and seconded to continue this item to the October eighth meeting, subject to the condition that it will not be continued again. There any further discussion? Mike?
So the point that Leon made, you know, about the traffic and having to consider the broader perspective of what else is going on with other developments. Isn't the town putting together a big traffic study? Shouldn't that be sort of the basis for that type of evaluation?
We don't have it yet.
And, and so the study won't have it for the next meeting?
It wouldn't be subject to it anyway, because we don't have it.
I, I kind of see what Mike's saying, though, like, how can, how can they, how can they do their study without the town first providing?
The town has guidelines, whatever they are now. That's what we've been doing traffic studies under.
Can we hold them?
We.
That's standard?
We haven't adopted any changes yet, and so they would not be subject.
Whatever information you feel you need to make your decision.
Yeah, yeah.
The fact that we don't yet have the guidelines in place, I don't think takes that away.
Okay.
Yeah, you can still ask all the questions, right? Yeah.
Okay, so, so we can ask them, but we're kind of like winging it a little bit without the, without the town's study?
I think there's enough wiggle room within the regulations.
You can ask whatever questions you want.
Sure, okay. I'm willing to do that.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, all right, so a motion to continue this item, item four A, to the October eighth meeting, subject to the condition that it will not be continued again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Chairman votes aye, motion passes. Item four B.
Chairman, I'm gonna cue myself on this one.
Okay. Once again, there's no one here to speak for it, but I understand the request has been made to continue this.
Right, and the, the, I guess the request is based on the ongoing communication between the property owner and the potential tenant for the building that's the subject of this application. So they've requested one additional continuance. They've been informed that this would be the last continuance before they hit that six-month mark. So it's up to the board, obviously, to choose to continue it or not, but at next month's meeting, I would expect that the board will have to make a decision or the applicant may end up withdrawing. We'll, we'll see where we are next month.
Okay, so may I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
This item four B to the October eighth meeting. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded to continue the item, this item, item four B to the October eighth meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item five A. Discussion and recommendation to the Town Council on Proposed Amendment and Middletown Zoning Ordinance to Implement Inclusionary Zoning for Affordable Housing. So the floor is open for comments. Ron, you want to make some introductory comments?
Well, yeah, I'll just, the chair and I guess the board as a whole asked that this be put on the agenda for this meeting to revisit the discussion. Over the past few years, the board has, has looked at this and, and over the past few years have been, there have been changes to the state legislation regarding inclusionary zoning, so I indicated in the, in the memo, the last time you all looked at this under a prior version of the state legislation, the adoption of inclusionary zoning would have resulted, in many cases, in a doubling of den- density of, of developments that were subject to inclusionary zoning. And that was due to specific language in the statute, which required twenty-five percent affordable, minimum of twenty-five percent affordable units per development plus also requiring that there be two additional market rate units allowed for every one unit of affordable housing. And that twenty-five percent affordable housing must be maintained as, as a minimum. So as a result of that, as you go through, and, and I explained this in prior memos to you and, and a little bit in this memo, as you go through those calculations, when you've got a, an example application before you, it, like I said, it basically resulted in doubling density for most, for most applications. The most recent legislation addressed some of those concerns. I think the legislature heard from towns that had no interest in adopting inclusionary zoning with that, with the provisions that were in place. So some modifications were made to the statute. It reduced the minimum to fifteen percent affordable housing and it also reduced the bonus requirement from one, from two market rate units to one market rate unit for every affordable housing unit. And it also allows for the percentage to go below that fifteen percent as you're doing the calculations and adding those bonus units. So with those changes being combined and as you run an example application through the current process, and you'll see, see in the memo, it does significantly reduce the density impact of, of having inclusionary zoning. You're still going to have the bonus. You're required to provide that bonus of one unit per unit. So you are going to end up with more units than would be allowed by the underlying zoning, but certainly nothing like was required under the prior legislation. So that being said, I've revised and updated our prior draft of the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance to incorporate those changes to, to the state legislation. And just to run through them quickly. So the legislation allows us to apply a threshold of up to ten units. You can, you could require inclusionary zoning of less, on projects of less than ten units, but the maximum threshold is ten units, so that's what I've included in the draft. So any subdivision application or other residential development, multifamily, or even a mixed-use development that includes residential, anything over ten units would be subject to the ordinance. In terms of affordability, and this was something that, that goes back to prior drafts that was discussed and I think recommended by the town's affordable housing consultant and, again, open for discussion, I think, you know, it goes back a little ways, of an eighty percent area median income maximum for rental units and a hundred and twenty percent for ownership units. But that's open for discussion. Something the board also discussed prior, and this is really up to the town and up to the board to decide where you want to go, is the potential allowance to provide units off-site or provide a fee in lieu of providing affordable units on the property. The board in prior conversations decided not to allow for off-site or this alternative way of meeting the requirement, because the goal is to actually produce units and produce units on the property where the development is happening. Still open for discussion. The board can certainly have more conversation about whether you want to provide an in lieu option for developers, but the draft that you have is going back to that, based on that prior conversation. And then the last thing I'll just mention is the fifteen percent. So again, something that's open to conversation if the board wished to require twenty percent or even twenty-five percent of units being affordable in, in those developments. That's certainly open to conversation, but fifteen percent is the minimum under the current statute. So all that being said, you've got, I think, some things to talk about, to, to think about. And I talked with the solicitor just briefly before we started and, and there are ongoing conversations at the council level specific to inclusionary zoning, but also more broadly affordable housing in general, and what the town's strategy and policy should be relative to affordable housing. So I think the board, you know, you have your prerogative to present something to the council as a recommendation. I don't have a feel, and I don't know if Michael can weigh in as, if, as to whether he's heard anything from his perspective on whether the council is in favor or not in favor of inclusionary zoning at this point. But I guess just a just suggesting that this is a conversation that's ongoing in the board and the council may or may not be supportive.
Yeah. Before I open the board up for discussion, I have a couple of comments. First of all, I think the, the changes that the state made are quite admirable. They, they make it a lot more attractive than it was the first time around. Having said that, when I read the, the state law changes that are, that they just passed, if the town adopts inclusionary zoning, we are no longer able to use the comprehensive permit process. I think that is. That's what it says. You can't use the comprehensive permit if you have inclusionary zoning.
We'll have to review.
We'll get that when we get to the state things.
We'll talk about it.
So, I mean, I raised that because, to me, that's quite significant, because with comprehensive permit, you can get much higher values of of, of affordable housing in a development. I mean, I, I'm thinking of Roseburg Commons, which was done under comprehensive permit. And we got a much higher percentage of.
Well, I agree. I'll, I'll have to look for that language if you, maybe.
We'll, we'll get to it in the next item.
All right. If you can point us to where.
Oh, I'll, I'll point it out to you.
So I, I, if that's true, I would agree that the town has been generally supportive of comprehensive permits when they come through.
Yeah.
We've got projects, or at least one under construction that went through that process, so definitely, I, I would think the town wouldn't want to take that option off the table.
I, I wouldn't either. That's why I raised the question. I, I would like to suggest this. I think, you know, when, when it was before the board, before we set up a subcommittee to look at this. And I think we can do the same thing. Set up a subcommittee to look at this until we get this issue straightened out and also to look at the details of exactly what is involved. And the subcommittee can come with their recommendation to the planning board. Let's wait till we get to the state.
Okay, but it's not, it's not an accurate statement, sort of the extent it impacts.
Let's wait till we get to the state, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to set up, because even if, even if that's inaccurate, we could still use the benefit of a subcommittee looking into this, so volunteers for a subcommittee?
I'd like to be on that subcommittee. I have some commentary on, on this.
Do you like to chair the subcommittee?
I can chair it, yeah.
Okay, two more members. Mike, who else? Who are you, Joe?
Sure.
Okay, there's a subcommittee. Leon, Mike, and Joe with Leon as chair. Up to you to.
Can we have discussion on this right now? No point?
Oh, no point, yeah. Take it into your subcommittee, talk about it, do whatever you want.
Prepared for some commentary tonight?
If you want to make it, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just think that, you know, this isn't a mandatory, this isn't a mandate for us to adopt this, right?
Correct.
So the first problem I have with this is that, that this is requiring inclusionary zoning. It's not optional for the developer. And here's my, my personal feeling. I have built properties, I've developed, no, 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 you know, multi-unit subdivisions, but I could just imagine that, you know, a developer that would like to build a neighborhood of ten homes to, you know, introduce more red tape, more math, math, more, you know, more of a burden to try to get a project, you know, over the goal line, which, which, you know, this is for more pages of red tape that they'd have to go through. There's already enough red tape in the building process and fees and everything that I think Rhode Island's problem over the decades has been a shortage in housing production. So to me, to put, to electively put more onerous requirements and more, you know, saddled developers with, you know, more red tape is absurd. I, I, I just don't think we, we need this. Especially considering Middletown is already, you know, we've already gone to great lengths to, you know, approve these big apartment building developments and there's a lot of housing coming online. I think this is premature. I think we, I think, I think we should just, personally, I don't even think we need a subcommittee. I think we should table this and, and send a recommendation to the town council to say we should not adopt this policy, and if we do, it should be completely elective on the developer.
And Leon, the council's not actually like affirmatively asking the planning board of anything right now, so.
You wouldn't need to send anything.
Oh, so. This is before you is because a number of years ago, there was a proposal to do this. The state law changed in a way that made it, you know, very unpalatable. Now it might somewhat be palatable again, but the council's not actively asking for advice. But that's how it ended up in front of you again.
I mean, is it worth going through the time and effort of establishing a subcommittee if this board is not, you know, supportive of this? Should, can we vote on that?
We can, we can, but keep in mind, you know, the goal of, of inclusionary zoning is to help the town achieve its ten percent requirement that the state requires.
I, I, I a hundred percent understand that, but we're doing that in so many other ways that, you know, this not only needs affordable housing, it needs all types of housing. And, you know, again, we need neighborhoods, we need single-family housing, we need multifamily housing, we need, we need, you know, a condo, apartment housing, and I just think that you're going to turn developers away that are interested in developing with more and more regulations. I mean, that's a, that's not what I think. That's a fact.
And I'll just say the discussions sort of over my level are that it would make sense to look at housing across all price points and think about our ordinances in context of the greater picture. So it may make sense to let those conversations take place and then, you know, perhaps there's more of a directive for the planning board to look at something, but.
Well, what is the sense of the board? Do you want to discuss this in greater detail or are you ready to vote on something?
It's, it's a complex issue.
It is. Very complex.
I don't know if we can whittle it down much to anything, you know. Do you think we can whittle it down to something more basic, you know?
No one's asking for this.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm saying, I, I think.
Take the mic. Walk into the mic.
The mic, microphone.
This is actually a requirement and not a choice of, of particular path for development. And I agree with Leon.
Well, the developer does have choices under this, if you read it, okay? They, they can offer different ways to satisfy the requirement.
I don't thi- I think the way this is written, and I mean, if you guys want to keep, you know, revising this, but the first statement is require that all subdivisions of ten lots or more and then must have a minimum of fifteen percent residential units dedicated to affordable housing. That's not.
But then later on, it says that they could meet that other ways.
In what other ways?
This particular draft does not allow for it in other ways. However, the state law is broad enough to allow. However, the state law is broad enough to allow you to draft an ordinance that could say you could satisfy it by making a payment to the municipality to be used for affordable housing developments in lieu of putting them on your own property, that type of thing. So these are, but.
So more disincentive.
But that would, you know, again, is, those are policy choices.
Sure, yeah.
But it also says they, they have
Yeah, no.
options where they could set aside land at another location.
Well, that's, that's what I was talking about earlier. The planning board previously had poo-pooed that whole, that whole provision to allow for those alternative means of meeting the requirement in favor of requiring the actual building of units on the site.
Yeah.
Right. And then in further in, in the actual ordinance itself, there's language about how, you know, integrating, you know, these, you know, low, lower income with, you know, market rate in the same developments. And although I think that's admirable, I don't think that should be the requirement of a developer.
As I said, there's, there's all kinds of ruminations that you could incorporate into the ordinance, but if the board's feeling is we don't, we're not really interested, then, well, you know.
As far as incorporating it into the housing development uniformly, I think that's requirement of comprehensive permit. That all the units have to be the same or look, look the same.
Or, yeah, for a comprehensive permit application.
So that's, it's a requirement of comprehensive permit as well.
Of what?
Having the units
In a minor.
Integrated and looking all the same.
Oh, right. But the, but to have some of them have to be, have to meet some affordability threshold as well, is that part of it?
Oh, yeah, that's what comprehensive permit is all about.
The affordable housing comprehensive permit. So Rosebrook Commons, it's under construction. That was approved through the comprehensive permit process. And something like forty percent of the units in there are going to be affordable and have to
Okay.
Be similar.
That's very, it's a different inclusionary housing is different than comprehensive permit. And there's a lot of choices you can make in crafting the municipalities' inclusionary housing ordinance, if the municipality wants to adopt one. And there's multiple different pathways you could take. And if, if this board is interested in it, then it would make sense to put a subcommittee together. If the board feels like it wants more direction of, hey, is this something the council is even interested in? Is there going to be an initiative to pass something like this and, and you want to learn about that first? That may also make sense. Might be a good topic for the joint meeting with the town council even.
Sure. And, yeah.
I just have a better suggestion. Why don't we just continue this and I'll talk to Paul Rodriguez about whether they're interested or not. And maybe we can just decide this at the next meeting.
I would like more, I think that's a good point. If, if the council isn't asking us to look into it, why are we looking?
There's no point to have a subcommittee if the work the subcommittee is going to do is not wanted.
Can I ask just one question? So, because I don't really fully understand comprehensive permit.
It's exact.
Let's just say.
Leon.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, no. I mean, it's a complex issue. And Leon, you bring up some really good points. And Mike, you just said exactly what I was going to say, is that let's see if there's, if this gets traction at all with the town council that warrants further, us diving into it further, because you're going to open Pinot Noir's box with this. And I don't disagree with Leon. It's tough enough to develop residential properties today anyways. And the last thing we want to do is put up any disincentives and additional, you know, speed bumps for developers to come into our town. So. I'd like to, I think the idea of a subcommittee is great, but I don't think it's, it's, I don't think we need to do it yet, yet.
Yeah.
All right.
So if that's okay, I'll get a sense from Paul and then we continue this to the next meeting.
Yes. Can I ask one question just to, while we have, while I have the opportunity? So the comprehensive permit, let's just say hypothetically, there's a twenty acre farm and someone says, you know, I want to develop it into one of these, like a traditional, single-family neighborhood. Is that subjected to the comprehensive permit and affordable housing?
The comprehensive permit is an elective choice. So if you have a site and you elect to do it through a comprehensive permit, you can get greater density.
Gotcha.
So if they wanted to make that a much, you know, more dense twenty acre farm, they could.
They have an optional path.
They have an optional path, and if they do it, they get some very, very attractive incentives.
Okay, so in that context, now that I understand that, I don't think this is even necessary.
And Leon, I'll, I'll say too, in, in my experience, most municipalities that have inclusionary zoning, they, those ordinances don't get utilized as a result of the comprehensive permit option, because it's so attractive to do it that way that people aren't always utilizing inclusionary housing ordinances.
Mike?
Was this topic also or the, the thing that we sent before the town council relating to multifamily units on R ten properties?
It's not related to this.
No.
That's a separate zoning change that you've proposed.
Okay, I remember reading something about that as I was going through this, through the package, you know, but it's not this topic, right?
No.
Okay, okay. But one of the things was that if they have, if they do include a say affordable unit and I guess they had, they would have the option of getting something else besides another market rate unit added on. I mean, they could ask for other incentives. That, that was one thing that was being discussed as well, right?
Following exactly.
Well, you know, I saw in the, I saw in the write-up there that, you know, it was, you know, if a developer, you know, puts in an affordable unit into, say, a ten unit, you know, development. He can, you know, I guess one of the things is that he, the incentive was to give him, allow him another unit.
Well, that's if the town adopts inclusionary zoning, they would get that bonus.
But there was also another option, because he could seek other options, you know, besides another unit as well, right? It sounded like he could request, you know, elimination of fees or, you know, some other types of.
Development impact fees, which is another, it's almost like a bargaining chip now.
That's if, if the developer, for whatever reason, so if, if the town adopted the inclusionary zoning, which requires the provision of affordable units, but the developer, for whatever reason, didn't want the increased density. They wanted to just stick with what the underlying zoning allowed. They could get some, some break on the fees or impact fees or permit fees. It's not, it's not spelled out specifically in the ordinance what those breaks would be. And to be honest with you, I can't imagine why a developer would not take advantage of the density bonus if they were going to be required to provide affordable units. Why wouldn't they want to build the additional market rate units?
It depends on incentives, you know.
It also depends on their budget to, to build out, to build units. I mean, you know, these developers don't just pull money out of the sky.
Leon, in the interest of moving along, Leon, in the interest of moving along, let me get some feedback from Paul and then continue this to the next meeting. That agreeable with everyone? Agreeable with everyone? Okay, so we have a motion to continue this item to the October eighth meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor of continuing item five A to the October eighth meeting, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. The next item, discussion and recommendation to the town council on draft amendments to the Middletown zoning ordinance, sections three eleven, three twenty-three, seven twenty-eight, eight zero five, nine zero six, and article seventeen. And the Middletown rules and regulations regarding the subdivisions and development of land, sections four zero two, four zero three, four zero four, four zero six, four zero seven, and eight zero five, necessary to implement recent amendments to state statutes as contained in twenty twenty-five Rhode Island General Assembly bills, H five seven nine four, H five seven nine five, and H five eight zero one. Rod, you want to take us through this?
Yeah, so we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. Over the last year, additional legislation has been adopted. It's it's geared towards trying to streamline the process and requirements to encourage housing development across the state. So that's been going on for the past few years where legislation has changed statutes. Again, to try to generate new housing development. So with the latest round of, of legislation, there's changes that are going to be required to the town's zoning ordinance, as well as the land development and subdivision regulations. I've had the opportunity to go through and I explained last time, there were some bills that took effect upon passage and some bills that take effect on January first, thirty-first, January thirty-first, maybe. So what I focused on was those bills that have already taken effect. So these are bills that the town is already subject to, but we're still required to update our regulations and ordinances to comply with the new state law. So what you, what you have before you are just our changes, amendments to to our regulations to address three of the bills. There are several amendments to the subdivision and land development regulations and several to the zoning ordinance. If you like, I can run through a summary of those.
I'd like to go through this page by page, looking at just the edits to see if people have comments about them.
Whatever, whatever you want to do.
That's the best way to do this. Okay with everyone? Okay, so unfortunately, the pages are not sequential for the whole document. They're individual segments.
Yeah.
So we'll take it section by section, looking first at definitions. Any comments on page one? Page two. Page three.
There are.
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, page five.
There are no changes.
Page five.
Okay.
Have any changes on four?
There's under, oh, are those just underlined? All the changes are, are underlined.
Oh, so are those changes on page four? I thought the changes were in red.
Red or, or, or green, because green indicates a relocation.
Red or green, okay. So on page four.
Anything that's a different color or underlined and underlined.
Anything that is a different color, underline.
Or crossed out.
Alas.
Or crossed out.
Okay, so on page four, the green print. Any comments on these? Page five. Any comments? Page six. Seven has none. Eight has none. Page nine. Any comments? Ten has none. We're looking at subdivision regulations, page one. Comments? I have a comment. On that B one, where they make the pre-application meeting optional. I would think a pre-application is helpful to the applicant. Why, why make it optional?
That's what the legislature did. Why?
I think, I think all of these changes in, in these ordinances are ones that are just taken directly from state law. So there's not going to be a lot, you know, so it's anyone's guess.
Some of them.
I think, again, it's trying to relieve some of the burden on the, on the developers. So if a developer says, I don't want a pre-application meeting, then it's one less step that they have to go through.
Okay, any other comments, page one? Looking at subdivision regulations, section four zero three, page one. Any comments? Two has no edits. We're looking at section four zero four. Comments on page one? Comments? Page two. Not even numbered. Sorry, this is subdivision regulation, section four oh six, section four oh six. Page one, unnumbered. Any comments? Page two. Each three has no changes, four has no changes. We're looking at section four zero seven. Comments on page one? Page two has no changes, three has no changes, page four. Comments on page four? Page five has no changes. Comments on page six? Comments on page seven? Page eight, no changes. Looking at subdivision regulations, section eight zero five, comments on page one? The, on page two, there are some items in blue. Are those new changes, Ron?
Just adding in, yeah, just adding in section numbers.
I assume there are no comments. Nothing on page three. Zoning ordinance, paragraph three eleven. Any comments on that page? Zoning ordinance three twenty-three. Comments on that? I just have a question. In the red, it makes reference to paragraph nine oh three, A two. What is that?
That's in the bindings for granting zoning relief. So that particular item. Yeah, item A two states that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. So for some reason, the legislature.
It eliminates that.
Eliminates that, correct.
Wow, that's surprising.
All these changes are required by the new legislation. We don't even have question here.
No, no, we, we just questions for information.
I do have a question, the.
Which, which page do you want?
Yeah, it's page two of the zoning ordinance.
Which, which zoning ordinance?
Says adaptive reuse of commercial buildings.
Okay.
Yeah, just.
Paragraph seven to eight, adaptive reuse. Let's do page one first.
Oh, sure.
Page one, comments?
Oh, we already did it.
Page two.
Yeah, just a question as to why that one dwelling unit per three thousand square feet.
That's actually one area where the town does have discretion. So what happened is that the you may recall this in our ongoing discussion of, of these types of projects, that under the prior statute, a developer was allowed to develop however many units within an existing building that they could fit under, in, in meat zoning or meet building code and fire code requirements. So there's essentially no limit on the number of units provided their code requirements are met. What the legislation does now is it allows the town to impose a density limitation if it wishes. Allow basically a limitation on the number of units. Now, there, there is some stipulations that if a ten percent affordable housing minimum is met, that, that there's a little more flexibility, but it says that if less than ten percent of low and moderate income units provided, what the legislation says is the town has the option of imposing a density limitation. I have to. What I've suggested is if the town, if the planning board wishes to proceed with a density limitation, might be one unit per three thousand square feet of land, which would be less restrictive than anything else we have in town right now. For example, in our mixed-use ordinance now, our yes, less, least restrictive category allows for one unit per five thousand square feet of land.
Does it's two family on an R ten?
No, this is for mixed-use development. So a multifamily project allows one unit per five thousand square feet of land.
Okay.
In a mixed use. In a multifamily development, the town is actually more restricted than that. It requires sixteen. It requires 6,000 square feet of land per unit for a one-bedroom, which is pretty restrictive, I would say, if you're asking for that much land per unit. I threw in 3,000 square feet as a number. If, if an adaptive reuse project comes through that does not meet that 10% affordable requirement, you don't have to have a number. You could continue on with sort of the way it's been done up until now is the developer has the ability to get as many units as they can fit into the building and still meet code requirements.
Give us an example of, of like a zoning district with a mixed use, with, where this would come into play? Or some kind of.
Well, this is adaptive reuse, so it applies to any commercial building in town.
It's just commercial.
Any commercial building in town has the ability to, to be adaptively reused for residential use. So we just saw the KBH building come through a little while back. ADI, I think, are going to go into that building. And it came in under the old regulation, so there's no density limitation. It's the number of units they can fit in the building. I did do a quick calculation on that particular property, and that's actually where it came out. It came out to about 3,000 square feet of land per unit, just for the sake.
How many square feet is that land? 200, that would be 240,000.
My head, but it's, it's a big parcel.
Six acres?
Ish. Goes all the way out to East Main.
Okay, all right.
Other comments on page two?
I was gonna ask where, where you came up with that. I was gonna ask where you came up with that 3,000 square feet. So thank you for providing that answer. And I like the fact that this gives you the option for a little bit more density, thinking that that 5,000 foot that you mentioned earlier was a little bit restrictive.
Again, up for, this is the one item of discretion the board has. It's up for discussion. Go with something like 3,000 forward and see, see where the public hearing takes us, but. Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I'm willing to do that.
Yeah.
Other comments on page two? I have one, just a comment on paragraph DDA. It limits the conversion to the building envelope. And if, if the purpose of these changes is to streamline the process for developers, this doesn't do that, because we've already had one example where a developer took a one-story building, developed it as a commercial building, added a story, and then did adaptive reuse to residential. And I believe another one is coming down the tube. So it seems to me this does not streamline that process for the developer. Has to come in twice instead of just once.
And they're using like a backdoor to end around, essentially.
It's, but it's just a comment.
Yeah, that's, that's the way the state law.
I know, just a comment.
That loophole, I guess you would call, call, still remains where they didn't add on to a commercial building.
And by the way, I don't think it's bad either, because it's providing housing. Now, we're getting a two-story housing facility instead of a one-story housing facility.
Right, but to your.
It's not so bad.
It extends the timeline for bringing units online.
Yeah, exactly.
So having said that, having said that, just to clarify too, that the legislation does allow the town the option of allowing for some expansion of existing buildings.
But the state does.
You would have, you would have to determine, well, how, how much of an expansion are you going to allow?
But the state doesn't allow it, right? Says you're restricted to the existing envelope.
I think there's a provision that, that unless adopted, unless the town adopts a provision that allows for some expansion. But again, it would be a conversation to talk about what that limit would be.
Okay. Any other comments there? Page three? Zoning ordinance 805, page one, any comments? Zoning ordinance 906, any comments? Page two? Page three? Zoning ordinance for Article 17, comprehensive permit. I yield, I read it too quickly. I yield.
Very good.
Comments on page one? Page two? Page three? Page four? On page four, under the lead paragraph for, for paragraph A, density bonus. If I read this correctly by deleting wetland buffers, are they saying that development is now allowed in buffer areas?
They're saying that that area can be used when calculating the density bonus versus.
Does that mean it can be developed?
It would result in more units.
No, it doesn't mean it can be developed, but that when you're doing the formula, you can include the buffer area as part of the land area for purposes of the calculation.
Or developable area.
Right.
Just to do the formula, not put, not to put development in that area.
So when you're making the calculation, you can include it as developable area?
Right, correct.
But you can't develop it.
That's correct.
Or you would have to go through a process to ask to develop it, but that would be.
Which you won't be successful in.
What is the rationale for that?
It's to increase the density of the.
Oh, I can, yeah, I, I see it. Okay, other comments on page four? Page five? Page six? Page seven? Page eight? Nine?
How come there's a mixture of red and green in the same paragraph there?
I think red denotes that the language was just taken from somewhere else. Is that correct, Ron?
Yep, and the green indicates it was just moved from one section of the ordinance to another section.
So the green is a shift, the red is brand new.
Sounds like we're talking about the Doppler effect. Page 10? Page 11? 12? Page 13? Nothing on 14, so we're done. So we have a motion to approve the changes that have been proposed by Ron.
What, what has to happen is because there are changes proposed to the town's development regulations, the planning board is required to hold a public hearing before approving the changes and then forwarding to the council. So that was going to be my request to you tonight is to ask me to help.
You requested. Find a date for a public hearing.
Yep, and what I would, I guess, also suggest is once we have that date, you know, we'll do the required advertising for the public hearing on the amendments to the regulations. But I would also put the zoning amendment provisions that are, that are part of this whole package on the agenda for that same meeting for additional discussion. As was pointed out tonight, there are a couple of areas where there may be some discretion that the board might want to think about on the, the adaptive reuse ordinance. So it'll allow us to talk a little bit more about that, those things as well. So that's my proposal.
By the way, I, I, I think we should have a special date for this, not do it at a regular meeting.
Fine.
A public hearing.
I'll poll the board and we'll, we'll find a date.
Yeah, is that okay with everyone? Okay.
How, how weekly does this fold into our regulation? You know, the town's regulations? I mean, is it structured in the same way? You know, like with the same paragraphs and the same?
Well, what, what you have, these pages are actually from our regulations. So I inserted the language from the statute.
Okay, okay.
Into our regulations.
Okay, I thought that was what came directly from the state.
Well, Seb? Okay, the next item is item 5C, consideration of potential topics of discussion for the joint town council planning board meeting to be held in the fall. And I believe that's November 3rd. So I'm, the floor is open for comments. Well, I have, nobody has comments. I have just a list of topics that we should discuss with them. First and foremost, the reason for having these meetings with the town council. We used to do it like every two or three years. And it's just to assure that the priorities of the planning board are aligned with the priorities of the town council. And so first and foremost, we should be discussing the priorities of the town council. The second topic I have, which no doubt will come up, is the West Main Cottington project. This meeting will certainly be after the public hearings and likely be after any action by the town council. So I don't know really how much there will be to discuss, but it's a potential topic. The third, I, I, I don't know. I put this down simply because it could be a topic, and that is the library. At some point, that's going to come before the planning board. And quite honestly, I don't know if there will be any issues. I've already read some issues in the paper about who's usurping whose space in the new library. But I won't go there yet. At any rate, it could be an issue, and so this could be a possible topic to discuss.
I think it's yet to be seen whether the planning board will see that. It depends on the extent of the project. If it's all interior work with no exterior work, then the planning board wouldn't see it.
Oh, so we won't even see it then?
Well, we don't know yet. It depends on the extent of the project.
Thank you for clarifying that. And a possible, another possible topic that I wrote, that I jotted down was the undergrounding of utility poles in the Atlantic Beach District. I think that's something we should talk to them about. So those were the four things I jotted down. Anybody else have any ideas? Hold on, Mike. Mike and then Leon.
What about that topic I brought up earlier? You know, the thing that we sent to the town council and they kind of sent back to us relating to, you know, multi-family housing in the R10 district?
So that's, that's going to be on in October, I think, at the council for hearing. So that may be resolved before the November meeting with the planning board.
Okay. Leon?
Thank you. I'd like to discuss, I think, a larger picture, including the undergrounding of the utilities, just the general plan for infrastructure in Middletown. That includes roads, sewer, water to support kind of all this development. And in addition to that, so just kind of a general infrastructure conversation, I think affordability and how to achieve a, a, maybe better affordability in town. And that, that, that involves possibly discussing maybe tax policy. And then also fees. I think we should revisit development fees and fees in general. I think, you know, I think we should review that and make sure all the fees that are, that, that, that people are being charged for various things, including now storage containers, you know, should be revisited. I think people are getting, you know, kind of nickled and dimed to death. And I think that's something that we should talk about. And then, you know, I'm sure we'll talk about it, but just like the long-term housing strategy in, in Middletown, in, you know, in the context of what we've already approved. Because at some point, my personal feeling is that it's a small town, we have limited infrastructure. And basically, I'd like to discuss, you know, get a feeling of what the council thinks this town can support with regard to, you know, the current and future developments. That's it.
Other comments?
I have one comment.
Charlie, it's Mike, Mike, Mike. Simply just want to point out that it appears that we may actually have a limited time. This is before a council meeting.
Right.
So.
I think the thought is probably about an hour.
Yeah. So I think, I'm glad that we've got a list of thoughts, but we probably need to condense them and be prepared, because our time is going to be. I'm sitting here thinking we should have a document that we send to them ahead of time, maybe. It would help the discussion. We can work on that with you, we can pass it by the board the next meeting, maybe, yeah. In the past, I have found that the council was more than willing to extend the meeting to make sure that they discussed everything they wanted to discuss. I don't think they put a time constriction. That's my recollection of those meetings, Ron. But nevertheless, we should plan to be brief. Other comments? Anything else on this item?
So since I've never been, since I've never been to one of these, is it, we're giving them our thoughts on things? Or we're asking them, like your first item?
It's a two-way street, it's a two-way street. But like I said before, I encourage the planning board members to speak up if something is not raised that you think should be raised. But if, especially if we prepare a document to give to them, we'll have the topics that we're interested in. So they will raise any topics that they are interested in. And, and, and it's pretty much a free exchange, Steve, so it's.
Okay, so for example, your first point, town council priorities, that would be a question to them when they tell us what their priorities are.
Well, and I think we should ask it in the memo and let them tell us. Other comments? Okay, next item is item 6A, status report. Does anyone have any comments on the project status report? I have none either, so we can move on to meeting reports, comprehensive plan.
Meeting tomorrow night, 6 o'clock, be here.
And this is the first meeting after the summer recess.
Right, yep. So I sent out some information, the draft of, I think, four of the elements. The drafts are on the website, on the, in the meeting packet for the Complan Committee. And.
Online, there's only one element, the housing element.
I'll, I'll check again, but I'm pretty sure in the packet for tomorrow, tomorrow night's meeting, I added the, the four elements.
I will check it again, too. I looked at it earlier today and I could only find the housing element.
Okay, I'll check it.
Okay, I'll check again also. Tree commission.
Yes, the tree commission's been very active lately. This past weekend, they took a visit to Paradise Park because there, there is some concern about the windmill operation. The people who are running the windmill would like the, some of the vegetation in back cut, cut back because of the, the, and the wind has been inhibiting the windmill operating at its full capacity. So the big question was how much vegetation would be cut back? And there's quite a controversy about the trees and about the vegetation. So it's very interesting to hear these people.
What are they going to do with the windmill?
What are they going to do with the windmill? Well, they're going to continue operating it. It can be operated, but it is not operating to its full capacity. And the problem happens to be the, the vegetation and the environment around the windmill. So you've got tree people who are really adamant that nothing should be cut. And you've got people who would like to see the windmill move just have the opposite opinion. So this is an ongoing thing right now.
Thank you, open space and fields.
We were discussing some access points for bike lanes.
We were discussing some access points for bike lanes and things like that. And specifically, they're looking at Brown's Lane, which is, goes down, I guess, towards the, you know, the cemetery, you know, like on the west, on the west side there. But I guess it stops, you know, and turns into a dirt road before it gets to, I guess you could say, defense highway. So they were trying to look and see if there's rights of ways in the historical record to see if they might be able to find a way to connect into Defense Highway and use that maybe as a, another way for bike access to get to the northern part of the island. So that was one thing. And, and then Melissa's going to come and talk about shore access, you know, and the work that she's done, you know, for, you know, to keep the access points, you know, open for the shoreline, you know, in five, what's it, about nine different places in, you know, in, in Middletown. I guess that's it.
Saying Brown's Lane does, does not connect to. What's, what's that highway on the west side?
That's highway.
Burma Road, yeah. I used to take Brown's Lane to go to the landfill, the.
Well, I don't think so. I mean, I, I think it's, it's the dirt road when she gets through that point there. I mean, it turns into the cemetery.
Oh, I, I know what you mean. I know what you mean.
And then, you know, she followed through instead of turning into the cemetery.
Yeah.
You know, there is some sort of a paper road there, but.
Just.
Okay.
Conservation Commission.
We had one meeting, I think, two months ago. We do have a new chair. The, the meeting was just to appoint a new chair, and it's Brian Hoffman. And we haven't had any updates since. So we do have a new chair for the Conservation Commission.
And the upcoming meetings are shown on the agenda page, October 8th, a regular meeting, October 9th, complaint, and then November 3rd for a joint meeting. Anything else to bring before the board? Have a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second. Motion is made in second to adjourn the meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, meeting is adjourned.